Kevin Donovan?
Yeah.
David Edman?
Yeah.
Carolyn Turner?
Yeah.
Buddy Bolton, absent. Chair Mike Fentressky.
Yep. First on the agenda is subdivision approvals not required plans, ANRs. Did any appear?
There are no ANRs this evening.
Okay, next up is a public hearing that's being continued. It's 43 Pool Street, definitive subdivision plans, 43 Pool Street LLC.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I know that legal counsel was here earlier, about 15 minutes ago. I'm not sure where he went. Do you want to go on to another piece of board business in the hope that they arrive soon?
Sure.
Or...
The board wish. Sure. We have a show from Dave.
So I'm off, maybe Lou just went again right there.
Okay, well, um, we'll go on to the planning board director update.
Sure. So I just recap for you. We've got a couple of subdivision completion dates that will be expiring over the summer or toward the end of summer. So they are going to be scheduled for your next regular board meeting, which is going to be on Tuesday, September 12th. I am asking the board to consider scheduling a special meeting of the board in August. There is a zoning amendment that's been submitted to the board for consideration, so we need to hold a public hearing on it. And we're also hopeful that we'll also, as planning staff, will have a potential zoning amendment for you to consider perhaps sponsoring relative to murals as public art. So we're working on with the city solicitor. But what I'd love is if the board could give me an indication of whether we might be able to gather a quorum on either Tuesday, August 15th, or Tuesday, August 22nd. That would help me. I'd check, obviously, with our chair as well, but I'd love to know your availability for an August meeting.
In person?
I think it would be in person. I think, well, it's a public hearing on a zoning amendment, but that could certainly be done via Zoom. Might actually be more convenient for people who may be out of town, who'd be able to call in for a Zoom meeting but not travel all the way to Woburn for a public hearing. So, yeah, I think we could certainly have that August special meeting by Zoom. That's important to know. Anybody know if they technically have a conflict on either one of those Tuesdays at this point?
At this point, I do not.
All right. Then I'll confer with the chair when I can, and we'll send you out a notice well in advance because we'll need to advertise the public hearing for the zoning amendment anyway. So we'll know the date very soon, and we'll share it with you. And thank you for your flexibility.
Thank you, Tina.
You're welcome.
Is that it for...
It is for my update.
Okay, we'll circle back. I see attorneys in the room. We'll circle back to the public hearing that's being continued. Again, it's 43 Pool Street, definitive subdivision plan, 43 Pool Street LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, for the record again, Attorney James Giuliano on behalf of 43 Pool Street LLC. I was actually outside and waiting for Fred Russell, who will be here momentarily, who's the engineer and can answer probably the majority of the questions. At our last meeting, I know we had a laundry list of items to address with the help of Tina over the last couple of weeks. And specifically, Tuesday, I believe, we had a Zoom meeting with, although it was an attempt to have some department heads, we had Tom Quinn, Planning Director Karen Smith, et cetera. But, so we were able to really hone in on a lot of those issues. We were able to chop down our waiver list. So the waiver list that I provided to you in a letter stand, so to confirm again, we are asking for now what is going to be eight waivers. Those waivers consist of 40-foot wide roadway where 50 feet is required, 100-foot cul-de-sac proposed where 110 is required, 24 feet of pavement where 26 is required, 84 feet of cul-de-sac pavement where 86 is required, water main not looped as required. We're going to get into that a little bit more. The proposed drain line material is advanced drainage system where concrete is proposed and required under the regs. We're doing one five-foot sidewalk, one five-foot wide sidewalk where four-foot sidewalks are required on both sides. We're doing one on one side. We are acquiescing on the sidewalk being proposed as asphalt and not concrete, so we are going to propose a concrete sidewalk based on discussions from the last meeting. And then the last waiver we are going to ask for is a three-and-a-half grass strip where five-foot sidewalk with no lumen seed where three-feet-wide grass strip required, four-foot wide sidewalk and three-foot loom. So again, there's three from the last letter that we're getting rid of. We're getting rid of and conceding on the concrete sidewalks. We are going to propose that. And we're also, as mentioned and noted on the plan that we submitted tonight, we are changing the slope to three-eighths inch per foot as required by the regs. And we are changing, I think there's a miscommunication on Fred's end and our end, but 12 inches select-grade gravel is going to be proposed now under the regs. So we're down to eight waivers. And some other issues and comments that the board brought up and Tina brought up through the last couple of weeks, we also changed and will be addressing tonight on our plan. The water looping, I'm going to wait for Fred to get here because he's obviously more inclined to answer the questions than I am. But one of the issues to address was obviously the cross-country sewer connection along the southerly portion of the site. That's one where we're asking for a waiver for. Fire department should review hydrant locations and proposed line valve connection. Our comment rebuttal of that is there was no mention in the fire department's comments regarding that. So we assume the hydrant as proposed in our plans are sufficient. Otherwise, they would have noted that. I think that was more noted in the engineers' comments than the fire department's. So we feel the hydrant is in the correct position. Similarly, the fire department should confirm it has no issues with the location of the streetlight. I believe that was either the department, I think it was probably engineering department as well. But again, we would comment to say that the police department did not note this in their comments about the plan. So we are basically putting the streetlight as the regs call for. DPW should review and approve the 12-inch of recycled pavement. Again, we modified that in the plan, so we are using the select gravel that's required. So we've addressed that. The DPW defers analysis of size and design of the drain system. I'm going to have Fred elaborate a little bit on this as well, but Conservation did not hire peer review or sort of mention this when we went to Conservation Commission. We are pretty much at the final stages of Conservation Commission. And then likewise, in sort of in furtherance of that comment, there was an issue or comment regarding the drainage in the HOA systems, which I'll address and Freddie will address in a while. With regards to that, I can only say that, and Tina and I had a little brief discussion about this, I went back to the stormwater management handbook, which does not apply to lots, single-family lots, four or under unless it's in a critical area where obviously drinking water supply is close and imminent. So I think that's why Teresa and the Conservation Commission had no issues with drainage nor the jurisdiction of drainage because it didn't fall into the stormwater management handbook. And I was going back and trying to remember, you know, which subdivisions were applicable because now we're getting into homeowners' associations and who's going to be responsible for sweeping and maintaining the drainage. And I think that's the main thing as to why Conservation did not mention this is because that it did not fall in the stormwater management handbook, so therefore they had no jurisdiction. And that was my recollection of that. At least it was when I was on the Conservation Commission for Tufts Road, and that was exactly the same situation here. So I think that sort of answers a couple of questions. Now, to speak a little bit more on that, the question is, what is the drainage system supposed to meet up to? And I think that's strictly put in the regulations of the subdivision rules. So I'll have Freddie elaborate more on that as far as TSS removals and sweeping and things of that nature. So we can get a little bit more into detail with that. We did have conversations about that small parcel A that abutted the neighbor that was contiguous to the roadway, and we are willing to have conversations and confirm that we are willing to give that parcel A up, which will be merged with Assessor's parcel 12-4-17.
Can I just clarify on that?
Yeah, of course.
So the issue was not to find out whether or not the abutter would accept the parcel.
Okay.
The issue was to get proof that what you were saying was true. And the suggestion was made that you approach that abutter and get some affirmative statement in writing to provide to the board indicating his willingness to accept and incorporate that parcel.
Understood, okay.
So it's very different what you gave me, and we talked about this last week.
Yep.
The fact that they're related doesn't really matter. We needed the affirmative statement, and I appreciate you sending me a letter to the board indicating that the client had told you at one point that they'd spoken with him and he was willing, but that at least in, if you need a planning staff, falls far short of proof. It's an iteration of a comment. Well, what I would have loved was what I suggested last Tuesday, which was a simple letter, a couple of sentences from the property owner indicating, "My name is X. I own the property at Y, and I am happy to report that I'd be more than willing to take acceptance of parcel A." That was on the PowerPoint last week, or at least the overall issue was on the agenda last month. I'm not sure why, despite a couple of requests, it hasn't been done, but at least from planning staff's opinion, there is no proof right now that you have that the owner would accept that parcel. Are they here by any chance?
They are here, actually. I was just going to say, they are here tonight.
The property owner at number, is it number 15 Winter?
15 Winter, yes.
So perhaps the board, if, I don't speak for you, but perhaps if they could certainly provide that assurance to you in person.
I would prefer in writing, although this will be a...
Okay, okay, well, I'm okay with that. Yeah, that's up to the board.
This will be recorded, though. In the minutes will be recorded as well.
That's true.
So I mean, I'll leave that up to the board how they would like to handle this. So at this point, what's your, state your name and...
Robert Galanti at 15 Winter Road. Yes, I agree with their plan, they had to take over the extra land. Yeah, I...
So just, yeah, just when we did one of the site visits, we did discuss that parcel and how it would give him more of a setback, and we were willing to give that to him on a quitclaim deed, and he did accept it. So that's the conversation. So I will memorialize that in a letter, but I just wanted to know that he is here tonight affirming that he will accept that land.
Okay.
What we should have is respectfully not a letter from you, but a letter, a simple letter that you would sign for the record, addressed to the board, saying, just reiterating what you said, that you're willing to accept the parcel.
Okay, sure.
That would be great.
Yep, we can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Galanti.
So that's regarding that parcel, regarding the comment. The street trees, I think the plan is modified to reflect street trees. I think, you know, we put, I think Fred put Pin Oak and obviously something that's similar that would be approved by the planning board. It is in the construction details sheet as well, showing you the plants and how they to be planted. So that was modified?
Jim, I apologize for this.
No, good, it's okay.
But after we had our meeting last Tuesday, I realized that when I saw the plan and saw where the trees were located, they're not located within the roadway right-of-way. They're on the individual lots, which is not necessarily a problem, except that if they are on private property, they're supposed to be within a 10-foot wide tree easement or tree belt that exists along the frontage. So while the street trees have been shown as proposed locations on the plan with species indicated, there is no tree belt and easement shown on the plan to correspond to the belt that's needed to cover those trees. That would give the city the right to maintain them, but would also make sure that the property owners don't have the right to remove them, so...
So they're outside that strip on the plan, is what you're saying? They weren't...
There is no tree belt shown on the plan.
Okay.
And there needs to be at least a 10-foot wide tree belt at the back of the right-of-way to accommodate where the trees will be planted.
Not a problem, okay. Thank you. The other discussion and point that was raised was with regards to parcel B. Parcel B, if you remember, was that parcel that was on the southeast side that contained the sewer easement to the city, also had that right-of-way walkway that, you know, brought individuals and, you know, more so kids from Pool Street all the way to the Alta Vesta. So we are willing to not donate it because I don't think the city is in, you know, really wants it, to be honest. So we are willing to give them an easement for that entire parcel B. So obviously, we would maintain that parcel. We would just give the right to the city to use it. And I think that alleviates a lot of liability and a lot of other issues that the city had. So we are willing to do that.
Excuse me, who, may I ask, who would actually own? It's an unbuildable parcel, and it's not necessarily labeled that way right now. Who would be the owner?
So that would be the owner would be lot, I believe it's two. Just want to look at the plan. So that would be that strip as part of Lot Two. Yep, that would be Lot Two.
Why couldn't you just incorporate that land area into Lot Two and give the city an easement over what it needs? It doesn't need an easement over the entirety of parcel B. It wanted an easement over the sewer line and over the walkway.
Yep. We could do that.
That parcel B has a couple of things. It has a retaining wall on it. Not sure what condition it's in, so I like the idea that it's not going to be owned by the city, but we certainly don't need an easement over that.
I believe, okay. The only reason why I think we mentioned that or brought that head wall into it is because if the city is responsible for cleaning that out and dredging it, I think they would want access. But again, that's something we can talk about. Because I think they would probably be responsible for that. But we'll hash that out, but that's noted. The fire flow, the testing, the flow, the fire flow for the water, again, I'm going to defer to Fred on that when he comes in. There were some questions and issues based on what we submitted previously. There is an updated chart, so we do have that that I'll, again, I'll let Freddie elaborate on. Size and design of the drainage system to be evaluated by peer review or engineering department. Again, I'm going to defer to Fred on that when he comes in with regards to any conversations that were had with Jay Duran and just talk about the drainage system itself. Same thing with the city sewer. I believe I'll have Fred discuss that. The encroachment to privately maintained infiltration system. So with regards to, if you remember the last plan, the infiltration system that was sitting on Lot One was infringing on the roadway. The revised plan shows that within Lot One altogether. So that's been addressed. That's going to be the pure responsibility of the owner of Lot, I'm sorry, Lot Three, I believe, Lot Three. So if, again, if you remember, that was encroaching on the street, that is no longer. Conservation Commission notes Berry Brook. Where did that come from? They were unfamiliar with that name. We did remove that from the plan. And then the name of the street was, obviously, with the ordinances, the name of the street we are proposing is going to be Winter Road. So that way, there's no confusion. We'll just, we're proposing to just continue the numbers onto Winter Road, so that addresses that issue. So based on that, I can certainly answer any questions, to the best of my knowledge. And, you know, I think there's a few issues that need to be discussed a little bit, one being the water flow, the second being the homeowners' association with regards to TSS removals with the drainage, who's going to maintain it, who's going to sweep it, et cetera. So I'll take any questions based on that.
Can the board have any questions?
Mike, I had one thing just to add to the list of issues. At the last meeting, you brought up, and I'm glad that you did, you reminded us that we had had correspondence from the U.S. Postal Service a couple of years ago.
Yes, thank you.
And so after the meeting, I forwarded to Attorney Giuliano some of the correspondence and documents we'd received from the U.S. Postal Service a couple of years ago. The issue is that if they are going to allow, are they going to allow the mailman to make deliveries directly to the door in the mailboxes? Or are they going to require a community mailbox? In some places, and in fact, in a different subdivision in the city, they required, even though the project had already been approved, they required the installation of a community mailbox. And so if one of those is required, you need to find land outside the right-of-way to locate it on one of the lots and arrange it so that it's safe pickup. So I wondered if you had followed up and whether you've got any elaboration.
I did, yeah. Thank you for reminding me. I did make a couple of calls. I tried Washington Street. I kind of got tossed around a little bit, so I don't have a definitive answer. I did speak to somebody over there, and I said, "Look, we're creating a three-lot subdivision, trying, proposing a three-lot subdivision," and they didn't really know the answer or who to send me to. So I'm going to keep at it. I mean, if this proposal goes through, we would obviously put a condition that I would obviously get confirmation definitively from the post office that gives us direction, so that way we're not, you know, doing something that would make the post office upset. So I have made a couple of calls. I'll make, I'll continue to make some more calls, but I have addressed that and based on your correspondence. Thank you for sending that too, by the way.
Thanks, Jim. Yes, Jim?
On the utilities, the sewer lines that are showing the drawings, you have three sewer manholes, sewer manhole three. Give them located in three locations. What's existing and what's proposed?
So the proposed is, I've got a good case.
Why don't we use the, what sheet are you on, Jim?
I think probably sheet four.
Four, six.
Yep.
Can you advance that, Jim?
Oh, sorry. I got control of it. I believe this is, this is probably the most applicable. This is sheet four of six.
Yep. If you start at the cul-de-sac, that's your first designation as sewer manhole three.
Yep.
Can you point to it?
So catch basin two and three are...
Sewer manhole, SMH three, right in the middle of the cul-de-sac.
Right there.
Yep.
So that is proposed. Is that what you're asking? That is not there right now.
Okay.
Yep.
Sewer manhole three, that's in the right-of-way, right at the elbow of the right-of-way.
Elbow?
New or proposed or existing?
Where's elbow?
Follow it down the page as you look at it. Right on the property line to your left with the cursor, down and to your left, down further. Keep going down, 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 down.
Oh, here it is.
Yep.
Oh, I see.
Is that number four?
That's number three.
So this, I see what you said. That's why I confused SMH three. So that should be probably SMH four based on the fact that we already have an SMH three that's in the middle of the cul-de-sac.
That proposed or existing?
That is proposed.
Okay.
That is proposed.
And sewer manhole three, further down the line, which is on the edge of the buffer zone?
Right here. I believe this is it, right here?
Correct.
I believe, if I remember correctly, that one may be existing because that is in the existing sewer easement. So I believe that is existing.
Okay.
Freddie can confirm that, but I believe that is existing.
And that's also SMH three?
Yes, all three of them are labeled SMH three.
Now we can get some real answers, so...
So those sewer manholes they refer to are some 14 feet down for the invert of the pipe.
So...
Yeah, they're existing.
Which, this one right here?
Yes. Oh, let me see.
This is the one in the sewer easement, the existing sewer easement.
Excuse me, Freddie, before you get into it, just... Fred Russell, project engineer for the project, so, yeah, so I'm sorry.
Let me start over then, seeing you just... Will you clarify the three?
So sewer manhole three is a proposed sewer manhole.
One of the cul-de-sacs new.
I'm sorry?
One of the cul-de-sac is new.
Correct.
One at the elbow of the easement.
Is new, correct. So sewer manholes, one...
And the easement?
Right, one, two, and three are new.
Okay. The inverts of those are 10660.
Okay.
Your elevation on the roadway is 120. That's a 14-foot cut, plus or minus. Your concern was about blasting up north of the water line.
Mm-hmm.
What stops you from putting water line in in that area?
So...
Your concern of blasting?
The profile, plan of profile.
Eliminated.
Where's the profile?
Should get out. Nope, nope, the other way.
Oh, you want the cross?
Yeah, this cross section here.
Yeah.
So can you zoom in to the rims and inverts? So this is... So that, see proposed sewer manhole three is elevation one, the rim is 12052, and the invert is 113, seven feet deep there.
Right down by the first proposed sewer manhole.
Okay, so...
You got a 10660 for an invert, and you have an existing profile, what, 116? Something around there?
Let me just zoom in.
That's a 10-foot cut.
Yep.
So sewer manhole two is, the rim is 1195, and the invert's 11220 here.
Well, and I think...
We're drawing you on with this, Fred?
I'm on the plan and profile?
Now, this one has a different sewer manhole number. That's SMH two on that plan, but on the other sheet, it was SMH three. There were three SMH threes.
Okay.
One in the cul-de-sac, that one there, and then the one that's in the easement.
Okay. This is, this is, this is the utilities plan and profile, so this is the main plan to go by. Sheet five, Jimmy.
Sheet five, sorry, yep.
Yeah, sheet five.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to read this upside down.
Yeah, so...
16, 113 for the last two inverts, is that correct? Plus or minus?
106...
Yeah, the one in the cul-de-sac was 113 and a half.
Right.
Yep.
Then 112.20, and then 106.60. Mr. Callahan, I know it's, the plan's inverted, but if you go from the last sequence that you went, you asked about this one, then this one, and then this one. So that's just to put things relative to the plan being turned.
So the invert numbers are the, the numbers are not matching between sheets four and five?
Okay.
And the concern for the utilities, which seems to be the bigger hang-up of this project, seems to be ledge that's the concern. There was one test pit that was done at 49 inches below surface, and were there any additional done since our last meeting?
No, there wasn't, Jim. So what I, I think I told you, right around where sewer manhole two was, we dug a test pit, and we did hit ledge roughly around the same, about 49 inches. My thought being is that if we, there's that extent of ledge all the way down, what we could do is adjust the sewer ups so that blasting would not be required because you, there's no require, where it's a cross-country sewer, it's not subject to H20 loading, we can adjust the inverts accordingly, as opposed to if you put a water main in, you have to be at least five feet of cover, so you would have to blast. But we would make some field changes to these and then come back to the board if we made some field changes.
Can you explain to me, as simply as you can, where the proposed water line loop was discussed between the city engineering and DPW and yourselves?
Okay, so I have some new information on that. We did not show the loop. We were asking for a waiver based on the hydrant flow tests that were done.
Yep.
Which, there's 58 pounds of pressure, is over 500 gallons per minute, so there's good flow and there's great pressure out there. So I actually spoke to the Superintendent of Public Works this afternoon about looping, and I asked him, you know, with, did he read the hydrant flow data? He agreed that the pressure and the flow was good. I said, "Well, the only other issue I can see is water quality. You have, there've been issues with water quality." And he told me that he got a call when this subdivision was filed from someone. He wouldn't tell me who, he wouldn't tell me what address it was, basically saying that they had dirty water and you better make, the quote was, he said, "You better make them loop the water main." This was a residence. There was no proof of the dirty water. I don't know where it is. I suspect it was some, a location on Winter Street or... on Winter Street or Mountain Road and on, in that vicinity. Um, so looping the water main, even if it was an issue for dirty water in those locations, looping the water main here wouldn't, would not do anything as far as water quality. It will improve the water quality, um, at the, on Winter Road for the two houses that are there now. But again, we're putting, and I explained to him also that I can understand if there were some dirty water calls on Winter Road because there's an eight-inch water main with no hydrant to flush. And, um, what we're doing is we're proposing to extend that water main with a hydrant so we can flush it for water quality purposes. So again, we're at the, I guess, the mercy of the board, we're, we're requesting, um, we did, I actually, Tina brought up a great point at our Zoom meeting about looking at the potential of looping the water main through the existing property on 43 Pool Street, um, which is a shorter distance and would not require any blasting. Um, the only hesitation there, um, is that the water main would be about 12 feet off of the existing foundation of the existing house at 43 Pool Street, and it would be also extremely close to the house at 41 Pool Street. So having a live water main between two houses that were built in the 50s, we're not so sure that's a, that's the best scenario. But that is an option to loop it that way, that would not require blasting. And again, it's, it's, I see very little benefit in looping the water main as an engineer, but again, it's, it's totally up to the board.
So the conversation, no conversations have taken place to try and combine that sewer easement, which is what, 20-foot wide? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think it's 20 foot, 20-foot wide, yeah.
To try and squeeze both utilities within that easement. I know that's not ideal, but I'll be very candid, I like the proposal here, but I'm hung up on the fact that we're setting a precedent here. It seems like our recent applicants have been here and presented proposals. Six months later, they're representing a different client and they're using those, uh, waivers that we gave on previous projects and they're using that as precedent against us. So we have rules and regs, uh, and I just assume that we try and stick to that as closely as we can, uh, and I'm kind of disappointed that the exploration between the applicant and the city departments haven't been further in-depth, find a location that would suffice. I think that there are other alternatives there that could have been explored. I don't know that, um, this has been a great effort. Um, I'd like to see, I'd like to see more effort because I mean, I've taken a look at these drawings, you know, every couple of weeks when they come through to us, um, a lot of considerations, but everything that we give up here tonight, if we do, the next applicant's going to use against us. Everyone knows that all the properties that are out there now, either they have ledge or they have water. So blasting, I know it's going to be heard from the city councillor because of the recent job on Main Street, but I don't think it's apples to apples. But as a developer, I think you guys have to consider not looking for so much relief all the time as a, not just yourselves, but in general. But thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other questions from the board? Fred, I believe there was some comments that Attorney Giuliano alluded to that needed some clarification.
Sure. Yeah, I think, I think one of the ones that I wanted, which was a, a point of issue was the water flow that we addressed, but I, obviously I can't elaborate on that, so I saved that for you.
Yeah, so we did a hydrant flow test, um, at the hydrant at the end of Winter Road, the existing hydrants. And again, based on that, we were getting over 500 gallons per minute of, of flow, which is, which is, which is excellent. And the static pressure was 58 pounds of pressure, which is, which again is excellent. So this was our, my point as far as for asking for the waiver because loop, when you have issues with pressure and especially flow, is when you really need to loop water mains. Here, you've got a vibrant system, and that's why we're asking for a waiver, that's all. Okay, thank you. Um, at this point, this is a public hearing, is, do we want to open it up to the public if there's anybody in favor or opposed? They can just come up and, and state their name. I see no one coming forward.
Make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion made by Dave to close the public hearing, second by Bob. All those in favor?
Discussion?
Yeah, for discussions, Jim?
Motion on the floor, I'd like to see if the member would consider keeping the public meeting open, reconsidering the vote, and, uh, give the applicant possibly another bite of the apple here. Currently, I don't feel strongly enough on these issues to give waivers as proposed. I, I do like the, the proposal. I think there needs to be more effec- forward by the parties, um, between the both sides to try and resolve it. I think there's alternatives out there that haven't been exercised.
Okay, so at this point, we do have a motion that's been seconded to close the public hearing. Uh, we could either have the motion rescinded or we could just follow through with the vote, and if it gets denied, it remains open. Okay, um, that, the motion to close the public hearing has been motioned and seconded. All those in favor? There's a hand? Three in favor. Those, I don't oppose? Three opposed. Okay, I'm Russell time. No, so we have a...
How does the chair vote? The chair votes against closing the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, what does that mean?
Three-three means it doesn't pass.
Doesn't pass, all right. It's been a while since I've been up here.
Right, so it's not closed yet?
Okay, so the, the, um, the public hearing remains open. Uh, with that, so, um, again, there's no, no more...
Mr. Chairman, if I may interject, I'm sorry. I, I think if we can, if we can get one more bite at the apple, I think that would be appreciated. I think we can probably fine-tune things and get something that would be appreciated.
I hesitated, I was so close to, to, to closing this public hearing to deny this only because we've been at this a long time and all boards involved, I mean, it's not just the planning board, just all departments involved are spending a lot of time and effort on this, and Tina's banging her head against the wall. It's, it's, it's been hard. Um, we, we need to whittle down these waivers. As Jim mentioned earlier, we've been, and in particular, you know, these lots are becoming tough challenges. Freddie, you, you could, you can agree to that. It's just, it's going to be hard. Um, so anybody that's going to be coming in front of us, they're going to hold this and they're going to, you know, saying, "Why not us?" And that's, that's just what happens. Unfortunately, you know, it just, it's the way it is, and that's why we have to be stern and stick to our rules and regulations. So with that, um, you, you know all our angst and problems. The next go-around, um... Through the chair, if I, if I, if I may through the chair? Yes, Fred, please. If I could just ask, I'm not sure what else we can do. I mean, we can loop the water main through the property at 43 Pool Street. We can do that, if so, if the board so wishes. We're not saying we won't, we don't, we just don't think it's a good idea. We think the consequences far away the benefit. That, that's all I'm saying. I don't know what more we can provide. We've, we've done the hydrant flow tests. We've demonstrated that the flow and the static pressure are fine in the area. Um, as far as I know, the only caller that came in, came when this subdivision was, was, was submitted. I don't know what else we can do. And again, and then if, again, so my point is, is that if you can vote on it and if you want the water main looped, make that a condition, I guess, and we can revise the final plans to do so, but I think we've been, this has dragged on a long time and...
Mike?
Yes, David, go ahead.
Fred, are you saying you support us closing the public hearing and making the vote?
I do, I do. I want, I want, I want this to, this to move and then, again, so be it, we're at the mercy of the board. If you, if you want to loop the water main against...
There is, there is an alternative, and if we close the public hearing, we take no more testimony. You could go off and have conversations with Jay Duran, and we'd get into a potential issue if you wanted to introduce new info or testimony. So one alternative is you can split the difference. Let's vote on the waivers tonight, send you away with a message, and if the rest of the board decides they want to give you more time, then you could continue the public hearing to a date in September and you'll have a laundry list of things. If you would prefer, I see the look on your face, if the board really, if the applicant is asking that the hearing be closed and a decision made, we can, I think the board can accommodate you.
Okay, yeah, we, we can't wait till September, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
With that, make a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion made, a motion made by David to close the public hearing, seconded again by Bob. All those in favor? Unanimous. Six in favor to close the public hearing. Okay, with that, Tina...
I might recommend that we start with votes on the various waivers. Uh, first one that the board can...
Excuse me, Tina, before we get into that...
Oh, certainly.
Are these all roll call votes?
Nope, nope. No need for roll call.
Majority?
Yep, be a majority vote on each of these waivers and not by roll call. So the first one would be to waive the requirement that the roadway right-of-way be 50 feet in width and authorize a waiver of a right-of-way width of 40 feet.
All those in favor?
Just, just to elaborate, I'm sorry, just to add, for what it was worth, um, the engineering department and the planning department both thought that this was a reasonable waiver because the existing right-of-way is 40 feet wide. So though your standard typically is 50, 40 would make it conforming to the roadway right-of-way that's out there. That was, those are the only two departments, I think, that have issued a comment on the right-of-way width.
Okay, uh, road, roadway right-of-way waiver, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five in favor, one opposed. No, who, Karen? That's, Bob already opposing.
The second waiver request was to allow a reduction in the right-of-way diameter of, the right-of-way diameter of the cul-de-sac from the required 110 feet to 100 feet.
All those in favor? Two in favor, four opposed, two in favor, James and Callahan.
Uh, third waiver request was to reduce the pavement width of the proposed cul-de-sac from the required 86 feet down to 84 feet.
Reduction in pavement feet, pavement in how many feet?
From 80, reduced from the required 86 to 84.
86 to 84, two feet reduction in width. All those in favor? One in favor, five opposed, Jim in favor.
And then, uh, fourth waiver was a waiver to allow the construction of a sidewalk on only one side of the road, on the Westerly side, where typically the board standard is to require a sidewalk on both sides.
Waiver on sidewalk. One in favor. That's the chairman, Ventreska. Rest opposed.
Uh, next requirement was for a reduction in the roadway pavement width from 26 feet to 24 feet.
Reduction in, in, in roadway width from 26 to 24?
Pavement width, yep.
Pavement width. We have two, three in favor and three opposed.
That fails.
That fails. David Edmonds, James Callahan, and Mike Ventreska in favor.
The next waiver is a request to not loop the water main, which is typically a requirement in, which is listed as a requirement in your rules and regulations.
Waiving of the looping of the water main.
Yep.
All those in favor with, of this waiver? No one's in favor. It does not pass.
Okay. Uh, request to use advanced drainage system as the material for the proposed drain lines rather than the reinforced concrete required by the regs.
Waiver on the drainage system. Two in favor, four opposed, James Callahan and Mike Ventreska in favor.
And then lastly, there was a request to have a roadway layout that was different from what's in the regulations. The request was to have a three-and-a-half-foot grass strip, a five-foot sidewalk, and no Lomond seed strip between the back of the sidewalk and the edge of the roadway right-of-way layout.
All those in favor? No, one in favor, five opposed, James Callahan in favor.
And those were the waivers. I think that's the exhaustive list.
Okay. With that, uh, next, um, would be to...
To deliberate on whether to approve this subdivision with a bunch of conditions or whether to deny the subdivision for a list of reasons. And, um, while that with the city clerk, we have until the end of this week to file it.
June 30th.
Yes.
What's the will of the board here?
Is there a recommendation from the planning director?
There is. Um, I think in this case, for a couple of reasons, the number of issues that remain outstanding, um, the fact that some of them have been outstanding for a period of time and not resolved. Frankly, the issue of the total suspended solids is a, a huge issue that was brought up sort of at the end of last week. That's a significant maintenance requirement potentially for the city or HOA, depending on which way it went. I would recommend to the board that you consider denying the subdivision for very specific reasons, which I'd be willing and able to articulate here tonight, and I think it would provide a written documentation of the issues that we found. I'll even update it to include the, um, uh, typos that we found this evening on the sewer manholes and that kind of detail. And then it would provide them with the list. It's unfortunate. You don't generally start one of these assuming there'd be a denial, but if the board did that, then they would have a detailed list of the issues and they'd be free to pursue the responses or, uh, answers to the questions and refile at some point if they can come in with a plan that conforms, um, to your regulations and, and addresses the outstanding issues. So if you want me to, I would suggest probably six reasons or so for, uh, the denial, and I'll articulate them now. One would be that we just found out, and I need to count, but there are a number of waivers that were requested. Obviously, they were not passed, some of them, and so for the moment, the plan in front of you doesn't meet some of the requirements of the subdivision rules and regs that the board has. To date, the petitioner has not provided the board with adequate documentation that proves the owner of the abutting parcel is willing to accept the ownership of it. I appreciate the testimony here tonight, but we had asked for it in writing. That had been the recommendation, and as of today, we still don't have that. Um, the plan to, uh, install the street trees on private property, as I mentioned earlier, is certainly permissible. They have to be located within a dedicated 20, 10-foot-wide tree belt, which in turn is located immediately adjacent to the roadway right-of-way. There isn't a tree belt easement shown on the plans, and I was unable to verify whether all the locations would have been within 10 feet of the edge of the right-of-way. To the extent they were not, they would not be conforming. Fourth, the plan does propose the creation of that parcel B that was mentioned earlier, and the proposal until this evening was to potentially deed it to the city, when, as the attorney, Giuliano, mentioned, there's no indication the city wants to own it. Um, the property instead should remain in private ownership, and unless it is changed, the plan that's in front of you has a subdivision plan that creates a non-conforming, unbuildable lot, and I don't know that that's appropriate practice for the board. Related to this point, while we're on the detail, while parcel B is clearly shown and labeled on sheet three of the plan set, it's labeled on sheet four of six... it's labeled on Sheet Four of Six, but the limits of the parcel weren't clearly shown. And on Sheet Five of Six, the parcel isn't shown at all, either by shading or labeling. The fifth reason for denial would be the issues that arise with the potential maintenance obligations that come from the choices that have been made as to how to meet or what stormwater management techniques to employ to remove the total suspended solids. The public conservation commission administrator came to me last week and explained that the way the system is designed, the requirement would, removing the amount of solids that has been suggested, 10%, would require, depending on the type of equipment, monthly, twice monthly or maybe even weekly street sweeping in order to achieve the 10% reduction that has been suggested. And that's an incredible requirement. The DPW department reports that they typically will sweep a street twice per year. And so suggesting that maybe it needs to be 52 times a year with a rotary sweeper or even 12 times a year average with a vacuum in order to ensure that the system removes the solids appropriately and that the system works as designed is onerous. And putting it on an HOA seems to be just as difficult. If there's any sort of maintenance requirement of that frequency, it will fall to planning staff to call the HOA members and insist that they prove that they've done the maintenance. And if not, then to pursue them to ensure they comply. And that's a lot of time and effort of planning staff or DPW and/or the city solicitor's office. So because of the potential that there would be either an arrangement that would overburden public works or be impractical for three property owners in an HOA, I would recommend that you cite that as a reason for denying the subdivision. Though results of a fire flow test were submitted on June 13th, the results were submitted too late for the board to obtain definitive feedback from public works or engineering in writing prior to board action this evening and the need for a decision tonight. I will say that I did talk to Public Works Director Jay Duran, who said he had reviewed those results and was unmoved at that point and would still recommend that the water line be looped. And that was as of late this afternoon. And then lastly is the issue of the postal delivery. If a centralized group mail delivery box is going to be required, as I said earlier, there needs to be a location proposed on the plan on private property that would house the CBU. The city didn't want them in the right-of-way in the other subdivision because we maintain the street and plow it. And if it's in the right-of-way and it gets damaged, it becomes a city obligation to repair or replace. So those would be the reasons that I would suggest to the board that you consider, in addition to the sewer manhole labels that we found that were incorrect and inconsistent from page to page, that you deny the subdivision for those reasons.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Bob to deny this subdivision, definitive subdivision plan, seconded by Dave. All those in favor? Two, three, four, five. All in favor, none opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate everyone's time and consideration in this whole thing.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up, we have done the director update, so we'll move on to the approval of minutes from May 23, 2023.
Motion to accept the May 23 meeting.
Motion made by Bob to approve the minutes. Do I see a second? Second by Dave. All those in favor? Unanimous, everyone's in favor. I don't see any other business for us, so I would entertain a motion to close the meeting at 7:55 PM.
I'll make a motion to close the June 27th planning board meeting at 7:55 PM.
All those in favor?
Oh, seconded.
Oh, sorry. I'm jumping again, yeah.
And you have to ask for discussion, I mean...
Second, Dave, seconded. Any discussion, Dave?
No.
No discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Ooh, out of control, Mike. Little power, huh?
Till last, Jim.